All the, uh, May seventeen, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting, order. Welcome, uh, everybody that's here. We've got a good representation here live and we hope we've got people out there, uh, joining us on the video. I will say to you, uh, our man that operates the equipment is not here tonight, so we have, uh, Ms. April doing that and she tells me that you will be able to see and hear us, but not communicate with us. So, uh, we apologize for that, but it, I hope you know that any time you got a question or anything you want to know about what's going on in your government, you just let us know and we'll get you an answer. Um, before we go any further, um, uh, if you wish, you bow with me, we'll have a word of prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for all the many blessings of life you've, uh, you've given us and continue to bestow upon us. We're thankful for the good weather. We're thankful for the opportunity now to get out and enjoy sun's shine and fresh air and hopefully have another winter behind us. We pray that you'll be with these council members and our city employees and bless them as they go about their work. And we pray that you'll give us wisdom and guidance as we make decisions for everyone that lives in this community. Now, we ask that you go with us and forgive us all of our many sins. Amen. All right, um, we have got a set of minutes in front of us from April twenty-sixth, and I need for y'all to take some action on that, either to approve them or modify or amend or...
One more.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public business. Who wants to go first? I guess seniority counts for something, doesn't it, Jim?
Different things, Mike, that I've seen around and need probably some attention. And one of them is the crosswalk lines and the arrows on square and square.
Okay.
And they're starting to pay out and I decided to bring it to council attention.
Okay.
As I usually do. Uh, I did walk around before the, uh, artists were on the square or during the art at early in the morning and picked up a baggage rash. I filled up a little dollar general bag. It stuck and it was floating around on the, on the ground. That ought, you know, that ought to be taken there by somebody. So, uh, I could, I stepped up and picked it up.
Good.
Uh, the block building that you guys have at the end of Elm and Commerce, which is part of the Water District, is it not?
The block.
Really?
Yeah.
It's growing.
You talking about the sewer plant, uh, sewer, um, pumping station?
Yeah, but, I mean...
Okay.
You've got trees growing out of the root, you know, and that's, that's not good for that, I wouldn't think. And shrubbery all around there. So, I just thought I'd bring that to council's attention.
Okay.
Uh, this weekend is train, Robert.
Yeah.
Okay.
Five hundred and eight people, I think, is what I saw the...
They all have money.
Yeah. I, I think that's what Terry Beebout sent out yesterday.
They did a bunch last weekend, so...
That's a big train, wasn't it?
It was.
I, I was over here. It looked like it was a car or two longer than normal.
Uh, I wanted to, uh, personally acknowledge Chelsea, Ms. Chelsea and Ms. Sam for the yard set. Uh, they were, I mean, between a rock and a hard spot at first with the, all the weather they had.
Uh-huh.
They pulled it off and I heard a, a few brumbles from my old vendors, but, you know, overall, I think they did well. And, uh, John Duett, who's a crew, cleanup crew, did not a fantastic job. So...
Good.
I just thought I'd...
Good.
Recognize them. Uh, there's, uh, one thing that bothers me, uh, just above my store in front of the hardware store, uh, the new, uh, decorated design shop, where even in front of the laundry mat, cars parking the wrong way and nothing's being done about it. And I came through the other morning and there was one tractor, as in a trailer, I mean, a tractor, not a tractor, trailer parked coming down on the opposite side.
On Main Street.
On Main Street, in front of the designer shop, freezing towards my shop. You know, you come, sometimes you come out of the, the avenue there and you're not, you can't see it. And so, I just thought, well, that's what I've seen and I ought to bring it to council's attention and...
Thank you.
Say thank you ahead of time.
Not, not a problem at all. Let me address some of them, Jim, so you'll know. Um, Bob is gonna be off tomorrow and then they've got a major water leak to fix Thursday, so they may not get to the crosswalks and the arrows before this weekend. Uh, and also, I'll mention the sewer pumping station to him about getting some of that cleaned up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's evergreen.
Yeah. I'll, I'll mention that to him. The car's parking the wrong way. The fellow's behind you there. Hopefully he'll deal with that.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the parking park, yeah, in front of the old hardware store in the Mexican restaurant that, and you're up there in the street?
Yeah, if you come right over, you're parking the wrong way.
People are parking vehicles that are just not settled because they're kicking out three feet in the rain, it's true.
I've seen that.
And it's a narrow place there.
Correct.
And we need that taken care of. It's places to park, but it's not making it work like that. It needs it, you know, so.
Right.
We got other people that's traveling too.
Yeah, if you're gonna have a roof or a...
Right. And a big old truck will pull in there and one, I had to stop and they crashed into it the other day. He was pulled in and evidently didn't have a car. And he just pulled in and was kicked about three or four feet out the highway. That's, you don't need that.
I, I fly a pilot or something like that, so...
Let me interrupt y'all just a minute. I've been asked to remind you to cut your microphone off when you're speaking. So, yeah, I mean, that's everybody. It might be me too. I don't know.
So, that's my, that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Okay. Is, is that microphone on, Jim? Is it showing green?
It is now. It's green.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Should be a green. Not coming on?
No.
Uh-oh. There it is.
They're not plugged in.
They're not plugged in. They're not plugged in.
Not plugged in?
It's not plugged in.
That might make a difference.
Well, thank you.
Right here.
Yep, we're live.
Nope, nope, nope.
Still not how?
It's like that, this one, no.
You didn't have to holler in your name.
Yeah, y'all may have to share. I thought Grant said we had one bad microphone, but he replaced it. Didn't he say that?
It was at the podium.
It was at the podium? Okay.
Back to our...
We'll get him on it.
Did he replace his bat?
He may have. He may have. That may have been what he meant. Anybody else, public wise? All right. Okay, we'll move on. Blake, you're first up tonight on the fire report.
Good evening.
In, uh, April, we responded to sixty-three total calls. Uh, out of that, nineteen were in the city and forty-four were out in the county. Um, kind of our, our daily average of that was about two point one calls per day that we responded to. Uh, this month you'll also see, we kind of had a breakdown of time of day. I wanted to run those numbers and, um, we've been responding a lot more during the day than we have at night. Uh, with, from six a to six p, we responded to forty-six calls and six p to six a with seventeen calls.
How's your daytime response? That's something that's always been a concern here.
It is. It's, it, uh, it always fluctuates. Right now, we're in a, in a good spot with that. We've got, uh, people that work, uh, on shift at career departments, some people that work third shift, things like that. And so, that helps with daytime staffing. But, uh, we always want to be vigilant on that and not get behind. That's, that's always hard in any volunteer department is covering daytime calls.
Yeah.
Um, coming up this Saturday, actually, May twenty-first, um, a motorcycle, a firefighter motorcycle group, um, called Fire and Iron, they get together, do, uh, events and they wanted to come do a barbecue and cornhole and a, uh, little bike ride and that would benefit the, uh, fire department. So, it'll be this Saturday. And then our fish fries coming up on June first. Uh, outside of that, we've had, uh, two members recently completing their, uh, medical, initial medical, um, training, their first responder. So, they've completed that course and they'll be going to get their state license pretty soon. So...
Good. Um, y'all didn't get your sign down before the second Saturday?
I, I'm hoping so.
Somebody said something to my wife at the dollar store and said, "I went over to get fish and there was nobody there." So...
Yeah, we, we had, uh, a lot of people stopping by and...
Yeah.
That was one of those weeks where, uh, where I'd worked a lot and saw it and...
Those things happen.
We were sitting at the ballgame and I said, "I need to go take that down." So...
Those, those things happen. Okay. Any questions, Blake? Chief, huh?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Out of the calls that you, um, have documented, how many of those are strictly medical calls versus fire calls?
Uh, forty-six out of the sixty-three are medical calls.
Okay. And how many people are trained and respond to the medical calls?
I would say, right now, probably, uh, fifty percent. Uh, a majority of what we respond to medical calls for is, uh, for lift assists. So, uh, in the event that, uh, the ambulance gets there and there's a large stairwell or, um, big porch, something like that where they need an extra set of hands, simply just moving the patient. So, a lot of the calls that we respond to are that. And, uh, the other portion of that is where we respond, uh, maybe the ambulance is tied up on another call and we'll render aid until another ambulance gets there.
That's what I was getting to. How frequently do you find yourself responding to basically passive violence situation until an ambulance can arrive?
Um, a large portion of the time, especially, um, right now, out in the county, in the areas that we respond to, um, their, their staffing has been, uh, periodically closed down some, some of the stations. So, there's times where we'll, there might be only one ambulance that, uh, is in this area and covering three calls for the county. So, it's, it's fairly frequent that we would do that. I would, again, I'd say probably about fifty to sixty percent of the time.
The only reason I ask is, does Watertown pay for EMT training?
Well, for the, uh, the EMR training. Um, so, we, we pass that to the city as far as for the testing, uh, the books and, and those things. That would, that comes out of the, the training portion. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
They've done a good job of training over the years. That seems to be getting better and better and, um... I'm glad to hear that. I practice what a preacher.
One more quick question.
Yes, sir.
How difficult would it be to start recording those percentages where we are rendering the aid?
Uh, we can do that. Uh, it shouldn't be any issue.
I was gonna say, that, that might be a good number to have statistically going forward.
Absolutely.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Uh, next up tonight is police. I guess Chief Hinterlicht, you've got that?
I got it.
All right. How is Bill?
Uh, he's still in neck brace. He's got three more weeks in the neck brace. He cast, still has to sleep upright, can't lay down, no pressure.
I probably shouldn't have asked that in public, but I knew I, I was worried about him a little bit. Okay. Um, got a police report here. Anything you need to tell us?
Um, no.
Okay. The things you and I talk, or you met, we'll get those. Um, one of them's a budget issue and you go ahead and get the other. Well, I, I won't, it's not fair to keep everybody in suspense. We've talked about purchasing a new car next year and, and, um, he's got a bid through Wilson County Motors on a government bid where we don't have to bid it ourselves.
That's right.
And we need to order it before Thursday and it'll be October before we get it. So, it'll be in next year's budget. Uh, but if something happens and we don't want it, we can back out of it. But, uh, we need to get at least one new car and do away with some of these that, um, the old car, you know, the old country song Johnny Cash, when he said, "I built it one part at a time" or whatever. That's kind of what we got.
And we're...
On one or two of them.
Yes.
Um, so, hm?
You have an honor?
I don't know what...
No, I, yeah, uh, you know, I wish that was really an option, but the problem is, is, um, just about anything, everything in law enforcement now has gone, just about SUVs. You know, you either get a Chevrolet Tahoe, a Suburban, or you get a, you know, one of the Fords and they've went away from the words of, uh, you know, what they used to be. Now, it's just Expedition, or it used to be Expedition. Now, it's just a police package. So, no matter how you look at it, it's not, no mileage is great. Uh, so, but just about everybody's... I went to a trucker's lot house the other day. We had a siren box went out and some lights and there was about sixty-five new ones there. And they were all national metros, of course, but every single vehicle in the parking lot, over a hundred, were just the new Fords. And then the Chevrolets were on the other side. So, I mean, there's really not an option other than a, that.
And that kind of go in cycles.
Yes, sir.
You know, for a while there, all we could buy was Chevrolets.
Yep. And then Ford kind of took over and now the Chevrolets have come back, uh, because they set a little bit higher, do a little, little bit more.
Okay.
I have a question on the place, on the place report. Um, on the codes, you've got two different codes for codes.
Yeah, well, what happened was, is when Don sent it to me, he doesn't have the same form that I do. And that's on us, but I, I will solidify that the next time. But it's all still the same. There's no different, like, one, one is not code for this or code for that. It's both together and all, it's in the same category of codes.
Excuse me.
Sorry about that.
I was just trying to figure out if we had five or fifty-six or fifty-five.
Yeah, well, it would have been the, the higher number with, for both of them.
Other questions, comments? All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Dale, you're third tonight, but you'll be first next month. Started saying last, but we don't, no, we don't talk about last.
The changes to the sewer use ordinance, uh, that we've discussed several different times, uh, we've got a public notice up on our webpage and, uh, it probably needs a first reading on it this month and then a second reading next month. I've got some...
Do we need to do a public hearing on that? Do we have to do one before the second reading?
I think so. I think so.
Then I'll need to. What we'll do next month is we'll recess during the meeting and have a public hearing and then call it back and say vote.
Make sure we don't have...
Yeah.
I've got some copies of it if you want.
Okay. All right. Um, that had been sent out. April, didn't we send those out to everybody too?
Yeah.
I thought so. So, uh, so we need to approve that on first reading. The changes are...
They're, uh, changes...
Tightened down our limits?
There's some calculations on the, the local limits and, uh, the, the plant protection criteria, um, is what they are. It's copper and cadmium. We're the only two that had changes. And the T-deck, the state has already approved the changes and reviewed the calculations for it.
Okay. Is there a motion then to approve the sewer use ordinance on first reading?
I saw it.
Is there a second?
A second.
As discussion, I will commend to you the reading of it. I say that jokingly. It's tough reading.
You're welcome to.
Yeah, that's tough reading. If you hadn't read it by now, you can read it between now and the next meeting. Other discussion, comments? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's approved. Uh, anything else, Dale?
Yeah, we've had some problems with our, uh, main pump station on Commerce. I wrote Cornwell on the report, but it's Commerce Avenue. Um, we had one of the pumps were leaking and I had WASCON come down to take a look at it. And while we were looking at it, we looked at the other pumps in there and actually one of the other pumps started leaking also. And, uh, while working on those, there's a submersible pump in the ground that, you know, in the floor that'll pump the water out and it quit working. And one of the valves, that isolates the valves, while we were messing with them, trying to get them to stop leaking, it got stuck and won't operate any longer. So, there's some money that will be, need to be spent in the pump station. Um, I got some epoxy and epoxied over the places where they're leaking, but that's just kind of a Band-Aid. That's not really a fix. Um, what we think the problem is, is where the, the impeller spins inside of a volute and where they get wipeys attached. Well, I've been complaining about wipeys for years, but the wipeys are abrasive and as it spins around, they're rubbing holes in the sides of the pumps. So...
Okay.
But, uh, we will be spending some money, uh, in the near future on the pump station. We don't have any much of a choice on that.
You'll have those, I'm sorry.
Is that the same place that Mr. Hammeros opened?
Yes, yes, the same, same pump station.
You'll have those numbers for us.
I'll have them when they get them in. They haven't really found, uh, um, you know, the right volute and stuff for them yet and, and they're working on that. WASCON is and, uh, we'll see what we can do with that.
It's one of those things we're gonna have to do.
Yeah.
Hope the epoxy works.
Hope it works for now.
Yep. And hope they get us a number soon.
Okay.
So, uh, no, I was talking about them. I know you'll get it to us when you get it 'cause we...
Okay.
All right. Other questions, comments? Anything else you need to tell us, Dale?
That's all I have for you tonight.
That's enough.
That's enough.
Thank you, sir.
Uh-huh.
Okay, that'll kind of segue into what I was gonna, uh, cover some things under old business. I have tried, or I'm waiting to hear back, for a meeting with the people that own the property where we need the sewer easements and our engineer. I've asked for us to meet on either June one or June six here at City Hall. So, hopefully we're gonna, we, we gotta get that wrapped up and get that project bid and that'll help Dale as well. Uh, and may even help, once we get the streets torn up, we can get them paved back in certain areas. But, uh, hopefully that meeting will occur on either Wednesday, June one or, or, uh, Thursday, June, I mean, Monday, June six. Somebody's calling me and I don't recognize, I don't know anybody in Ontario. Okay. Um, the dugout that was damaged with the wind, it's fixed now, April? Is that right?
Yes, it's fixed.
And Bob said it took about three thousand dollars.
Three thousand dollars.
We've turned that in on our insurance and, um, um, we'll, well, we've got another item we're gonna talk about here that's on insurance as well. So, they'll settle up with us on that, uh, over and above the deductible. But, as I understand it, they got it fixed in time for the league to start. So, I haven't heard any complaints or anything. We have talked sometime about updating our municipal code and I am prepared to get you to vote on something. And then I went back through the last four months' minutes. And I think we voted in March to do it. But the lady that has, that, uh, April has been talking to, Ms. Myers, sent me a resolution and you have it there in front of you. That was, should have been the only thing. It was on your desk tonight. If you'll look on the last page, uh, they need us to approve that resolution. It'll cost us three thousand five hundred dollars. We'll have to pay fifty percent of that upfront, fifty percent when they're done. I did not get an answer on how, how quickly or how long this would take, but, uh, this needs to be done. And y'all approved it in March, but I think just to be safe on this resolution, we need to approve this tonight. So, I can get that down to her and we, we can do a check Friday, April, and send it over, over to, get them rolling. That, that's to the Municipal Technical Advisory Service. It is based on our population of fifteen fifty-three. The census, to my knowledge, still has not been certified and I think our numbers are probably gonna be a little higher than that. But, uh, uh, this resolution will authorize us to spend three thousand five hundred dollars and we've got the money to do it. So, I recommend that to you.
And when we take our minute, well, this, this is for our minutes or just our...
It's for our codes. So, anytime, like we, the last one we did, I think, was, uh, uh, incorporating the state traffic fences into our city corridor, that will be in there. And they will love it. And, and...
And anytime we pass anything, all you've got to do is email it to them and it's updated?
Yes.
Or you have to wait?
No, you send it to them and then they'll charge you by, by the page. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that would...
And that pay per page charge was pretty expensive, but, um...
Twenty-one dollars.
Yeah, I mean, that's expensive pace.
I don't know if it's a previous minutes or not, but I'm assuming we're gonna go with the web hosting option on this.
Well, we may, we can or whatever. All I brought was this resolution tonight. So...
Yeah. Well, there, there's two options there. One's with the web hosting and one is without. So, I don't...
With the web hosting, as I recall, the per page charge goes away. But I don't know what the fee was for the web hosting.
It said that two hundred dollars a page with the twenty-one dollar per page.
Okay.
If you flip back a page for any resolutions, the schedule there.
What does web hosting mean?
We asked that to Haley.
I think it's to have it back online.
Yeah.
It's what?
To have it back online.
And where will it go online? Under the M-TAS?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you go there now, you can look up certain things under...
Previously, Mommy and I did, did web girls took, they took it all, so we get it back online. We have to pay that that was the fee.
Okay.
And I think she said that was the two hundred dollar yearly fee and then it's twenty-one dollars per page. Just...
For changes.
If I'm recalling, that's what Haley said. Yeah, for changes.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'm fine with that. Yeah.
I think we need to then, we can piggyback and put it on our website.
Sure.
As long as it's on there.
Sure.
We could update the city website with a link and then it would be, would give, 'cause the questions we're getting, if it's, if these aren't online, it's not gonna be very productive for the, for the community and our citizens out there.
Okay. All right, well, entertain a motion that we approve this resolution and take the web hosting option. Is that the way we wanna say that?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I will make the motion to approve that.
And I'll second that.
Okay, is there a discussion on that? I have a feeling this one's gonna pass. I'll go ahead and sign it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, April, I've got the original. Remind me in the morning to give it to you.
Okay.
I'll put it back in my stack. Let's send it away and keep up with things here. Okay, got that done. Um, mentioned to you two or three months ago that the senior citizens had some money they donated to us and what they wanted us to do was to redo the restrooms. Uh, and we need, well, I'm sure we'll have to put some money with that. But we need to move on that. And, um, my thought to you is, not my thought, my question, how best to go about that? I don't know. We don't have a design. I really don't wanna pay an engineer, but depending on what it costs to do it, we may or may not have to bid it. I believe it's under fifteen thousand, if I'm not mistaken. We wouldn't have to bid it. But how do we employ somebody to do it? We have thirty-four people in town that build and I don't wanna single that one over another. So, what, what do y'all recommend on, I feel, I feel bad you sitting over there by yourself. Uh, how do we, how do we put that out there to get, because I think these people are gonna say, "Well, I, I can do it, but what do you want done?" So, but what do we want done? And I'm not smart enough to...
What does senior citizens want?
Well, they want, they want, they want them improved, you know?
Yeah. Well, that was gonna be my suggestion. Since the senior citizens are donating funds to this, if we could get some kind of input from them in terms of what they would like to see done, that might give us a basis for a design.
Well, well, it would. Uh, the other thing you need to think about, uh, we need to think about is they are not ADA compliant right now. So, whatever we do, we need to make them ADA compliant at this time. It's not really open to the public now, but one day it may be. Uh, but at, at any event, it needs to be ADA compliant. So, um, I don't know. Again, I'm, I'm fine with what they want done, but whoever builds it's gonna say, "What do you want where?" And that type of thing. So...
Why couldn't we just ask the, the ones that are building, you know, the two of their fault? And if somebody's instigating or they are, you know, that they'll meet with, uh, a member of senior citizens or us, you know, to have a sort of committee and decide what we wanna do.
We can do that. Um, perhaps just put out there, if you're interested in, in taking a look at remodeling our restrooms in the community center, come and take a look at it and give us a proposal.
Yes.
And then we can decide if that's enough or whatever.
Do we mail something from brushing up on the ADA compliance regulations and requirements so that we know what's being done, is meeting up with board?
Yep. We had a young man that was raised here in Watertown, Jim Kibble, who worked for the county mayor and he did all of the ADA stuff for the county and everything. And I was able to use him a lot. I say use him, I was able to, he made himself available to us. He's no longer there and I don't know who in the county, if anybody is doing that.
But he can be on the committee. But he can be on the committee to just serve as a member of Watertown?
If he would. He's retired, and he's kinda living out on the lake, and I'm not sure that he's having a...I don't know whether a good life or not, but I think he's doing what he wants to do. Uh...
Because it would not be bad to have just a one stall, a baby changing station, a larger vanity, that would make it accessible for the ADA. A larger door, I mean...
Yeah.
I think it'd be...there are large enough frames, you really could have just a one stall back.
Could...could we make those ADA compliant, the way they're sitting now?
No, not the way they are right now. It's pretty tight now, like this bathroom, you have to tear in there.
Well, I mean, not having to move walls or anything.
Oh, yeah, I would think so, about just making a one stall.
Okay.
And not even having a stall necessarily, just making a one...
Okay.
Bathroom.
Okay. But still have separate ladies and men's...
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right, then I'll just, uh...
I don't see why that should be a problem at all. You would just cap off where the one toilet seat is, and just like keep...I mean, updated, of course, but take the walls down, and you would have to open the doors up to make it ADA friendly.
Okay. I may call...
Accessible.
I may call Jim Kibble and get his thoughts on the ADA part, and then I'll put the word out to the two or three builders that we have in town. I'm thinking of two offhand, and maybe another or two, and try to...
I don't think the ladies are asking for anything elaborate. I think they're just wanting something a little nicer.
That's what I was thinking. I wasn't...'cause it's not someplace you spend a lot of time, anyway.
Right.
But I do want them to be nice, and then I want them to be accessible.
Yes.
Um, so I will, uh...
Because right now, I mean, it's pretty tight for even someone with a walker to get in there, and if you were around in the ladies room, I could see where that would be.
Well, that's not the widest hallway either, as you look down through there.
It's not. I still think it...hold on, wait.
You know, you almost gotta make a 90-degree turn. If you're in a chair, you gotta push down through there and then make a hard right. Um, all right, we'll see what we can do on that. Um, okay. I hope to have something back to you in June on that. The other thing I wanna mention, and this is something we've been talking about two or three years, and I've been dilatory on that, and that is, we need a new sign out front. And I would like to see a sign constructed that is a nice sign, and I'm talking about maybe a brick, set in a brick thing, or whatever they do now. But I'd almost like to see if we can something digital, where we could program it from in here, and people could put their community events on there, or at least some lettering that we could put on there. So, uh, I'm going to approach Pat and Donna about what they can do for us, what they suggest, and hopefully we can get that project up and running. We have the money to deal with that, and I had somebody two or three years ago, and I will test that out, see if they're still interested. It had somebody that might donate some money toward it. They would not pay at all, but they would...so, uh, I'll check on that. But I wanted you to know that's back on my radar, and I'll try to talk to Pat and Donna about that. Uh, okay, we got some things we got to vote on. Let me start off with a...let me start off with an easy one. When our basketball team, our boys' basketball team, made the state tournament several years ago, we had some videos being shot here. The Duck Dynasty people were here, and Hootie, what's his name, Darius Rucker, was here the day before they played in the tournament. But the excitement in this community was unbelievable, and we wanted to do something for them. We had a parade for them as they left. The police let them out of town. But we painted purple and white paw prints from what was then the high school, all the way out to past Mark Fletcher's on Main Street. I had a lady ask me Saturday at the park, saying, "Mayor, why can't we do that? Whether we're going to state tournament or not, why can't we have that?" And I said, "Well, I don't know that we can't. I run it by the council." Um, talked to Bob today. We still got the...
The stencil.
The what?
Stencil.
Yeah, still got that. Um, so Bob said we could do it. Of course, he said, "I can't do it tomorrow." I said, "Bob might ask you to do it tomorrow." But I'd kinda like to see it, too. And we suggested, this lady, well, she and I kinda talked about it, maybe starting at the edge of the square, uh, and run it all the way out that way. We can't run it from the high school anymore, 'cause we got the highway to deal with. But I'd like to see that happen. I'd like to see us do that, so...that's just me. Y'all tell me.
I think it'd be great. You know, years ago, I approached, when I first came back to Watertown, approached Becky Taylor about, "How can we put some purple...what can we do to add some spirit on the square?" We were having paper rolls on the square at that time. And she changed every other light bulb to purple. And so at nighttime, you see purple and white lights all around, and she still is doing it. And I think that's great when people are coming into town for vaudeville or whatever.
Yep.
And I know when we go to other schools, it's just nice to see the community having that school spirit in that town, bringing that town together, so...
Well, I remember the day we played our first and only game over in the state basketball tournament. I believe, um, hmm, I believe that you could've robbed a bankier that day because everybody else was in Murfreesboro.
We should've won.
We had a chance. Our inexperience caught up with us in the fourth quarter.
You know, this year, we've got track is going to state.
Yeah.
Hopefully, baseball's looking promising. Tennis is looking promising. So, soccer's looking very promising. They've got a big game tonight, so we'll stick our leg. So, it's not just the football thing. Sometimes we think about the school spirit just being football, but...
Well, I...I was just thinking while she was talking, she wasn't really talking about athletics. She was just saying, you know, the kids will like it. She said, "I'd like it." I'd kinda like it, too. Uh, well, yet, somebody authorized us to do it, and we're off and running. But it won't be done tomorrow, Bob's telling me. Bob has plans tomorrow.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Second.
Discussion? All right. Yes, ma'am?
Not to be a flying horn, but I've been watching, you know, we've all been watching some of the Facebook nonsense go around, and some of the nonsense is not really nonsense and somebody's concerned about money spent on the roads. So, the first thing I can imagine here is, why are we spending money on paw prints, and we have to fix that crack in the road or whatever, you know, and what are we gonna do?
Yeah, I understand that, and we've gotta request them for some money through Congress. I hadn't heard back from them, so, uh, that's the single biggest need in this community, in my opinion, is our street paving. Uh, but I don't think it ought to keep us from doing other things. But, yeah, yeah, but, you know, I really hope one of these days we can pave...I hope we can pave over it and have to paint them again. That'd be good. Okay. Other comments, thoughts? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Next few things get a little bit more difficult. Um, a few years ago, we went...we have guys from the city of Lebanon that assist us on a part-time basis on our water plant, and we have had, uh, we need some things done over there. I met with one of them two weeks ago yesterday, and gave me...he gave me a list of things that need to be done. Um, making that more difficult or more urgent, I guess I should say, was that lightning struck one of the wellhouses. So, um, one of the things we need to do, and I'll get to that in a minute, the lightning strike, but the, uh, the tank up there has to be cleaned every so often, and the T-deck folks have recommended that we clean that. Or, when they recommend, you know what I mean. Now, they say it in terms of recommended, but it's kinda like they'll shout. Um, you have two proposals there. One would clean the tank where we don't have to drain the tank. Water stays in the tank. They folks put a diver in there, and they clean the inside of it, the diver does. The other one would require shutting down the tank, closing it, draining it, uh, letting it get down at least very, very low. Two concerns I have about that option. One is, if we got down low and we got a major fire, we got a problem. And the second is, if we're gonna redo all the wiring and everything over here, which is the next thing I'm gonna present to you, we need to get that done before we start tinkering with the relay from here to there and back. So, my recommendation would be that we approve the lower bid, uh, the lower proposal, and clean the, uh, tank. Uh...
And that was the 9500?
No, it was the 5950. Almost $6,000.
9500, I'm not...
Clean only, repair the level indicator and a couple of other things. Um, we've done this four or five times since I've been mayor. Um, but it needs to be done, has to be done according to T-dot...uh, T-deck. So, uh, I'm gonna recommend that 5950 to you.
Can I make a motion to approve this recommendation?
Okay.
Is that what you're gonna do?
Yeah, I do. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Y'all understand what we're doing. Everybody knows what we're doing, why we're doing it. Okay. Know where the tank is? You know, up behind the old...well, now it's the middle school. It's up on the...
Some top of the hill.
Yeah, I guess that's a...I guess that's the highest point in town in the city of Lebanon.
I believe it is.
Uh, there used to be one down here behind Jim Amro's place, one of those stilted ones, you know, and up there where people would climb up there and write things on the tank. And we replaced that about, gosh, Hal, that's been 35, 40 years ago.
Sure.
So, uh, in any event, it needs to be done, and I appreciate the motion and second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's approved. Next thing's a little bit more costly, but it needs to be done. I hope you got an opportunity to read the things that I sent out to you yesterday. But basically, let me give you what little history I know about it. Most of the stuff that's in this building over here, the water plant, we put our, as I understand it, our water system may have gone in here in 55 or 56, and some of the things over there have been here that long. Now, we have done, like Dale talked about, some epoxy, and we've done some patching. We've replaced little things at a time, or this at a time. Well, we've not done a major electronic overhaul on it. And J.C. said it needs to be done. Um, he said, "I'm not trying to help you spend your money," but he said, "If that goes down and you can't pump water, it's not gonna be but a few hours until you have a problem." You know, the tank will hold, uh...Dale, if you know more about this, probably do...I think it holds 400,000 gallons, and we average pumping about 250,000 a day. In the summertime, we'll pump more, sometimes as much as 330. So, uh, you can imagine, if that goes down, we're probably out of water in a day, day and a half. And we've got an emergency connection out here with the Wilson County Water Authority, but we pay for that, and that would cost us a lot of money. So, I'm gonna recommend to you that we spend...it looks like a complete lock-and-key job. I read through it. Don't understand what they're doing, but I do understand when they say, um, somewhere here, "Total pricing for a turnkey SCADA system equip, install, and start-up, $51,829." So, I recommend that to you, so we can get that done. Some of our ARP money, I can give you, that's where it'll come from.
Okay. Mike, I have some questions about that.
Sure.
Uh, according to the quote we got, that is a...there's some radio components involved in that between the pumps and the tank and so forth, and it allows for remote access over the internet. My concern is, there was nothing stated in there as to what kind of security or encryption is involved in that to keep someone from, uh, you know, getting...hacking into that system and causing us problems, or holding us for ransomware or whatever, because you're exposing that software system to a potential outside hack. So, do we know what is built into that from a security perspective?
I do not. I think that's a very valid question. I do not know the answer to that. When I talked to J.C., he was telling me that the beauty of it for them is, is that if something goes down, they can deal with it remotely rather than having to drive up here in the middle of the night or whatever. And that's attractive for them and us, but your concern is legitimate, I think.
I agree. You know, I'm all about convenience, but I'll take security any day.
Yep.
And so, if it requires someone to drive up here and be payable, go to work again now at 3:00 a.m., that's a lot easier than...or cheaper than ransomware, not allowing us to call. So, if there's a way we could actually cut the internet component completely, that would be safer.
Well, I mean, I don't know that we need to cut it. Uh, my concern is, uh, this proposal was a turnkey proposal that involves internet access, so I'm just curious as to what security measures are in this system, and wanna make sure there's something there that, uh, some type of encryption on the transmissions or something that would protect us from a cyber attack.
That needs to be found out, in my opinion. And so, if y'all feel comfortable holding up on this tonight, I will ask those questions and get the answers, and email them out to you, and if there are follow-up questions, let me know. Um, and if we need to move quickly on it, if J.C. tells me, "Yes, here, this, this," and you're satisfied, and he says, "We need to do it soon, if not immediately," I'll call you back together and we'll do it. But I'll get you your answers. Those are good questions. Good...frankly, I hadn't thought about that.
What is the yearly base of this?
Uh...
I don't know.
I think if I read it right, we own it. There is no annual fee?
That's...I think that's what I remember.
It did say that, but then it mentioned about, "We have just a one-year unlimited 24-hour service."
Yeah, we got one.
Seven days a week. So, what happens after that one year? Are we charged for that service that we have to call on, then?
Yeah. The warranties that we get from things at home or here are...you rarely get one past a year now. Um, I'm looking for that law.
It says the warranty is one year, but then it says one-year unlimited telephone support. So, I just wondered if there was a...if it was doable dating?
Or what would the extended support be beyond the first year?
I mean, that's not a deal breaker for me. I just...
Well, that's a good question, too. Um, but I thought there was something in here on it. By the way, I'm not interested in the financing. We can...we don't have to pay the interest. We can pay cash. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not finding it right now.
Extended warranty.
Right. It makes reference to extended warranty period and additional costs, but...
But I couldn't find where the...
It doesn't...it doesn't say what those options are.
Okay. All right, y'all wanna hold off on this tonight?
I think we have too many questions that we need to hold off until we get some answers on the details.
I agree. Okay, we'll do that. I'll bring that back to you next month, if not sooner, but I'll...I'll get this information, hopefully, to J.C. tomorrow. Uh, he's very prompt, and so I'll get that back. Um, your budget report, um, we should have it through May 13, through Friday, the 13th. Our budget's in good shape. Um, Parks and Recreation is still showing a negative, but the money's coming in now from the concession stands, and that will catch it back up. It's not unusual. It happens at this time of year. Uh, and we've had good concessions, so I encourage you to eat hamburgers and fries, and chicken tenders and fried bologna, and whatever Bob's got down there. He keeps it pretty well stocked. Um, make sure I'm...anybody got any questions about that budget report? I will say to you, and I always hesitate to say this because I'm worried about jinxing us, but this city is in better financial shape right now than it's ever been. So, feel good about that. We've got funds to deal with emergencies. On a... On a Watertown-sized emergency basis, not a Nashville-sized based emergency, or New York City, but, um... So feel good about that, and I hope we can continue. I'm not, I, I believe you ought to have a savings account. Um, let me go into that, but, um, I'm well aware that fourteen, forty-four days from today, we've got to have a new budget in place. I haven't started working on it yet. I'll try to spend some wheels and get that done in a few days, but you will certainly have it at our next meeting, and maybe in advance of that, 'cause we have to pass it twice. So, uh, uh, I'll get that, I'll get rolling on that. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to ask your permission on, and I don't really, I don't think it requires a motion, but I wanted to bring you up to date. Over the last year, eighteen months or so, from time to time, we've said, "This'll be a surplus item," or "This'll be a surplus item." I'm gonna ask everybody in the city, the street guys, water guys, sewer guys, police, fire, whatever items you've got, you consider surplus, bring us a list so we can declare it surplus, and have a surplus auction, either put on gov deals, or, or get us a... I don't think that's one that's allowed under the law, but, uh, you know, you can do anything, as long as anybody doesn't object to it, you know? Um, I said, "I can't believe I said that." Uh, that'll stay with me forever now.
You are an attorney, so I mean...
Yeah, 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 I'll plead ignorance on that, how about that? Yeah, you don't have to say anything, I'll plead ignorance. Uh, but I'm gonna ask everybody to get us a list together, and we'll get that out to you. Uh, our next meeting, we just mentioned, would be June the twentieth, it's pretty late in the month. Um, we have, uh, Jim Amro mentioned, we've got the train, excursion train Saturday, uh, Train Robbery Day. Uh, June the eleventh is the Big Hill Challenge, where these guys that ride their bicycles for a hundred miles, or thirty-four miles, or whatever, come to town, it's always a good event. Uh, to see that means, very colorful, they all wear their outfits and stuff, and when they take off down Main Street, it's very colorful. Um, Fourth of July Parade, we've heard from Ms. Dowd about, uh, she's, uh, gonna be taking a sabbatical this year for medical reasons, but we're not gonna let you out that easy. Uh, we have Fourth of July every year.
That's right.
There you go. And, uh, but we will have the parade this time, you've got that covered, got somebody in. It's a political year, so there ought to be some people.
Where can they find our application, is it online?
It is, it is. And it can be sent back online now, but it's been set up for a year or two. Now and then, someone that come online, get way late somewhere, but we're gonna have to.
And I want to say one other thing, just in general. Um, Grant, that usually runs the equipment, is, uh, will be graduating Thursday night, as will a whole lot of our people here in this community. And I want to say congratulations to all of, not just the high school graduates, but, uh, uh, we've got kindergarten graduation, I guess, does junior high do a graduation? They don't? Kindergarten, high school, we've had, uh, young people graduate from college the last few days. Um, many with bachelor's degrees, at least one with a master's, and one with a doctorate. Um, and, uh, so I could say congratulations to all of them, and to all their, all their families, and for the work they put in getting them to where they are. And I hope they appreciate that, and they will one of these days when they look back on it, as to the opportunities they were given because their families helped them get to where they are, so. I'll get off my soapbox with that, and start around the table. Aye?
Mike, several years ago, we were questioning about buildings being set up beside homes.
Mm-hmm.
And places that were. I remember, and Tom Nix, a good friend of mine, he put one up and chained it to the house, and has never left it done about it. We need somebody here in town. I've had some problems, lady, our sort of questions. We're putting, uh, buildings in front of houses, uh, places, uh, carports, uh, and nothing's been done about it, and evidently, I like Tom, our shooter, but evidently, he's not up here enough to take care of that problem. We either need somebody up here that recodes, or make sure he sends somebody up here. It's all over town, and, uh, it's science being done that is illegal, according to our, our codes. And, uh, we are, people question that, I've had several lately. And, uh, why can't she do it, or why can't I do it? That's coming out. And, uh, uh, we need somebody up here that, uh, that's gonna walk, go around over town and take care of these. We got, up on Grand Avenue, there, we got buildings right beside houses, illegal. And we didn't have, and we, we need to do something about this.
Well... Uh, okay, I, I don't disagree with that, in defense of Tom.
He's covered up, I'm sure.
He's got sixty-something thousand parcels in the county.
And, you know, I take a lot of time.
Yeah, I mean, but if somebody will tip him off, if they just tell, or one of the guys, Daniel, or whoever there is, say, "Take a look at this," that can get done.
But I thought, does Officer Rillen's not big enough? What, does Officer Rillen's not big enough, or do you have those type of codes?
Little, little codes.
Okay.
I think that could be, I mean, I may speak, that's contracted up to the county.
Yeah, that's right. Zoning violations and building code violations are done through contract with the county, I just paid the bill.
But you don't know if they've gotten a code, though, like, I have a building in my driveway that I have a building permit toward that was approved.
Yeah, but...
Like, how do we know they're not approved?
That's right, but the, the thing about it is, it approves stuff that's not legal.
I agree, and now I wish I would have put Tom for it exactly, after I moved in on it.
Uh, it's one person here, put a, a carport in her driveway, right through the house. Okay, the lady come in, asked me, and I said, "Why can't I have one?" So I said, "I don't know, I'll, I'll, I'll find out." I came over and talked to April, and got Tom's shooter's number, and gave it to her, told her to call him. And, and, uh, uh, we just need, they don't have his number, or, or anywhere to get in touch with him. And, and they don't know if they need to. We, I just think we need somebody up here that, that can see what's going on every day, like we used to have, even if we have to send him, scoot, to take care of the problem. Uh, it's just too much going on, that's, that's, I got a little problem I want to talk to, I doubt.
Yeah, uh... Like so many things, Hal, it comes down to cost-benefit ratio. Is it worth what we'll have to pay one person to get up to speed on the building codes, the electrical inspections and all of that stuff? For what business we have here in town?
But how we can complete, uh, these, uh, some people, and let others do what they want to, I, that's what I'm saying.
Well, we're not letting anybody do anything.
They're doing it, don't you think?
Yeah, I, I, I take issue with the term that we're letting, and we're not.
No, I agree, I'm that, that, I mean...
We, we, uh, we have to know about these things, to be able to deal with them, and... Okay. Well, I'm open for...
I don't have an answer to it, I just know...
I don't either.
We need, we need something done, I don't know. Uh, you just can't go up by your house and build a shed by it. It's a purpose for that, better than space from boundary to house.
Sure.
Firing and wind, or...
Sure.
Whatever, it's, we got, it's a reason for that code.
Certainly there is.
And, and somebody said, "Well, it's my property, I'll be able to..." No.
No.
That's not gonna work.
Those days are long gone.
Right.
Okay.
Well, there, there should be a record of the building permit for the ones that are legal.
Yes.
Because I, I had to get one for mine.
Sure.
Nineteen, I say, thirty-five years ago, we passed it, according to what Randy looked up, we passed it, if you got a, uh, a fraud or a carport, it's gotta be on the side of the house, or on the back of the house. And I know people, it's several people in town that got in front of their house. And, and, uh, nobody's ever questioned it, or called, nobody's, probably didn't care. But that's not the way, uh...
Well, I looked at a deal in Richland, I know of two specifically on your road, that their driveway is in front of their house. So if we end up with a carport, I mean, like, that would be fine.
No.
I mean, it looks fit, looks better.
It's, it says, according to the codes, it's got the side of the house behind it.
Let me go back to...
It's specific for the design of the house.
Let me go back to Steve's comment, and that is, we do have, the process works, if you live in the city, you come here and fill out a building and, uh, an application. Then it's sent to Tom, and somebody comes out and checks it, and they hang the building permit thing. Bob Morgan doesn't do that anymore, nobody in the city does that. So, probably some of these things, most likely, Hal, you're talking about, people just didn't come and file their app, application. Didn't wanna pay the fee, didn't wanna pay the adequate facility tax. So, uh, okay.
So, something we need to think about. Can we, and, I don't know the process, so apologize in advance, but can we revisit the city codes and determine, I mean, do we vote on them here? Is that in to us from the county?
No, no, we have our own here.
So we would vote and determine if they change, if they're outdated, or what have you?
Correct.
If there's adjustments? That might be a better approach, because, I'm not saying all of them, but some of the codes may be severely outdated. Things, things have changed so much potentially in thirty-five years, that you're worried about something that may not even be applicable, and ignoring something that could be a real problem that wasn't even an option thirty-five years ago. So that may be a beneficial approach for us, and then we have the opportunity to publicize revised codes. As an attorney, I'm sure you know, in the state of Tennessee forever, after an inmate was released, they were entitled to a thirty-three rifle and a horse. That was on the books until like nineteen seventy-something. Well, not really applicable, but that was the problem, and that may be part of what happens with the codes.
It could very well be, um... Yes, would our codes need to be revisited? I'm just thinking, when Tom brings a code, potential code revision through the county, he'll, he'll generally propose it to us as well, unless it has something not to do with us, in other words, if it deals with fifteen acres or more, or something like that. But generally, he'll propose it to us. Um, I'm satisfied that in that code book, that, uh, when they start redoing this, they're gonna find a lot of things, not just in quote codes, but, you know, police work, uh, I think there may be even some, be something on there about spitting on the sidewalk, that type of thing.
Right, right.
I think that if we were to try to do anything, the only thing we could do is identify which projects were permitted and which ones were not, and I don't know what our recourse is against those that were not permitted. If we can force them, give them a certain amount of time to get, to get it moved, or get it corrected, uh, we'd have to go through the notification process, and...
I'll get a list of permits, Steve. Uh, and then, uh, with y'all's permission, I'll ask Tom to come in at our next meeting and discuss this, Louis.
Okay.
I do know, matter of fact, Tom is at the meeting where I left, but I do know on his needs assessments for next year's budget, he has asked for another employee. If there's anybody in the county that needs more help, it's his department. And, uh, I hope he gets it, so, we'll see. Uh, but I'll, I'll, I'll get him to come in next month, and then, and I, in the meantime, do we have those building permits here, April, or do they stay with Tom's? We have them here, so we can lay our hands on the last two years' work.
If someone's got a new permit, they fill it out, and pay it, and then I'll send it to Tom.
Okay. All right, we'll get that list pretty quick then. All right, what else you got? That's a pretty good discussion. That's a pretty good discussion. All right, Stephen?
Uh, I've just got one thing to add with what Mr. Jim said earlier, when he was talking about the, uh, crosswalk, some things on the square.
Uh-huh.
Um, we've discussed in this group before the intersection of Elm Commerce Road and Commerce Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it was brought to my attention by the gentleman that lives right there in front of that intersection, that there is no stop line painted on Commerce Avenue at the stop sign, and the stop sign really might be in the wrong place. If nothing else, I think we should be able to get a white stop line painted on that road.
Where the stop sign is?
Where the stop sign, yeah.
Okay.
It would be on Commerce Avenue, I believe, is where the stop line would be, and we need to, uh, at least if that's painted, it might, uh, bring attention to the drivers that they are supposed to stop coming from that direction. Right.
Yeah.
But, but there's no...
But there's no stop line in the street.
What about if we go back further away from it and say also, "Stop ahead," or, you know, we've seen those, too?
Right.
That'd be all right, wouldn't it?
Right. We, uh, there, there needs to be some sign, possible additional signs there, but at least a stop line painted in the street.
Okay. Okay. All right. Why don't you make that in the form of a motion, so we'll have it in the record, we did be doing that?
I'll make a motion to, we, we paint a stop line on Commerce Avenue, at stop sign with Commerce Road.
All right, further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. Yeah, we can do it. We can, we can make it purple and white. All right. What else, Steve?
That's all.
You, Marla?
I have a few things. Uh, last month, we talked about the crossing at the middle school, I know, we had a big discussion with you guys. So I emailed Steve Spencer, um, he said that the lady is going to finish out the school year, but she is not returning for next school year. Her main function is nothing more than get the buses to make that turn, stop traffic and let the bus, she sees a bus, she's supposed to stop traffic and let the bus go. That's her main function. Um, it is true, she's not returning due to all the harassment and stuff from parents. I will be looking for a replacement if one can be found. I do not have any, enough subs to cover spots when she or any other crossing guard is away. If there is a way for a P.D. to cover that spot for thirty minutes in the morning and afternoon, I think the district would entertain paying for that service. Meanwhile, if you have any candidates for the part-time position, I would like to speak with them. So...
So, uh, she hasn't been there for a little bit.
She, yeah, she was in, took off for two weeks, two, yes, she was out for...
She went there today, yesterday, but it's okay. But we have been going up there because it's such a problem if we don't.
You're right.
Y'all been covering it for some time, haven't you?
That's why I dressed it.
Have y'all been covering it for some time?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I mean, we don't have an option. And I don't, I wish that we could do this, but I don't think that, uh, we can be compensated as long as we're on the block from some other government entity, and I don't know how that would work if they were to reimburse you for hours, 'cause we're, we're on the block for hours, so it wouldn't be extra hours. So I don't think, in my, just looking, I don't think that they could pay you off for paying us, we're already out there, unless you call somebody in, but, I mean, let's get, we make thirteen dollars an hour, nobody's gonna drive to forty-five minutes to do fifteen minutes worth of work.
I think we might be able to work something on that, and we could call it some type of, uh, differential or something, if you work school traffic for that period of time, you get, now that'll create some extra bookkeeping for April, uh, on the payroll, but I think we can do that. The first thing she said, that he said, disturbs me a little bit. When we met up there way back in August, you and I and him, we made it very clear, we weren't concerned just about the buses. The, the people driving the cars were the ones lining up on, and then somebody driving down the middle.
Right.
And I thought we made that clear, yeah, don't.
Thought we had some of the duty, but...
Well, it would be. Yes, sir?
That's a mad house.
Uh, I, I think we could look at something like that, I mean, I think we could structure it. I believe you've got the people down there that'll be willing to do it.
What if it's an emergency, who, then they're, they're getting paid for two different positions?
No, they're not getting paid, what, what they're getting paid is if they work school traffic that day, let's say for an hour, thirty minutes in the morning, thirty minutes in the afternoon, you're gonna get some kind of differential, a couple of extra bucks an hour or something. And as, uh, he and I talked about today through email, my focus on this next budget's gonna be getting wages up, I'm gonna tell you. Uh, he's mentioned already.
One of the other things that affect us here is, uh, that would be a perfect idea if we had somebody here that's dedicated to it, but what happens?
But what happens is, is when we have the office here, you have, they get a call.
Right.
We can't even stay and help the buses. Just, and then people are really upset. I can understand their upsetness, but when we get a call on the radio, it's something that can't hold. We have to leave, and that's right in the middle of it. So that is kind of a problem too. And when she was here, she did a great job, but, I mean, people yelling at us. We just had, we just told somebody for that the other day, but, you know, it really takes two of us.
It does.
Because what you, you know, somebody down here, just us up here on this end stopping with her was great, but nobody down there. It'd be, it's impossible to stop people from coming, splitting the middle, getting the buses out. So it really, really is, it's almost a two-minute job, the way that they-
Well, it, I, yes, I think you're right on that. Um, you know what, and I'm just sitting here going through my mind, all the schools we have in this county. And this school, these two schools are probably on the least traveled road of anywhere in the county. We got schools that are on two thirty-one north, we got schools that are on Mount Juliette Road, and y'all know how that is.
Yep.
And they're putting crossing guards there and handling it, why can't they do it here?
Well, he even told me that the gentleman from the high schools, they possibly moved back to Lebanon. They would make that five to-
He's wonderful.
He is.
He is so good, I know.
Would you say wonderful?
He is wonderful.
You want him to move?
No, I want him to stay right here, no.
I misunderstood.
He is wonderful, not, it is wonderful, he is wonderful, I want him to stay.
I guess I don't understand, and I'm just speaking out loud here, I may regret it, because I represent the board, but I don't understand why they can't provide that service here. If they've got people that can be trained and stand out in the middle of US Highway two thirty-one, or Mount Juliette Road, and they're not just getting the buses off the road, they've got to stop that traffic. Why can't we do that here on a city street? Five lanes?
Yeah. I really don't think anybody is wanting to come out here. Like, nobody from our community has applied to be here.
It's like anything else now, there are shortages everywhere, but-
Right.
As you say, we need to, and we can't call somebody in just to do that.
And if I'm not mistaken, it's fifteen to eighteen dollars an hour. Hal, I approached you about it a year or two ago. Do you remember how much I left, I told you it was? I mean, it was, I thought, a pretty nice chunk, of course, it's just an hour a day.
The problem you've got there is you're only talking an hour, hour happened.
Right.
And it's not the best weather for-
And, and, right.
November to April.
That was, that was my feedback from that one. My other thing was the ARP funds. I had someone email me asking if it, he thought you had said it could be used for health and wellness. If it can be used for health and wellness, could those ARP funds be used to add lights to the tee ball field?
I think that's a stretch. I think health and wellness, yes. I don't know how playing under the lights makes you any healthier than playing in the daytime. That, I think that's the way the government's gonna look at it. But I don't mind him asking that question, but-
And I'll be honest, I've never gone back there to the tee ball side.
Oh, it's a great little side.
But apparently it is, and it's used up until it gets dark, and then it can't be used.
Yeah.
So you can only have like one game out there a night?
No, you can have two.
Okay.
Yeah, um, you can now, you couldn't back in March when we started practicing, but, um, I don't know, that's an interesting question. Yes, health and wellness is, but they're encouraging things like gym membership and that type of thing. Yeah, so I don't know about lights.
Okay, I brought it up.
If it could be done, that's, hmm, we'll look into that.
Okay. The other thing that I was, uh, brought to my attention was the codes. They were talking about business, I mean, they were talking about vehicles, buildings, grass, you name it, just are, they feel like the codes were getting enforced more. I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I'm just bringing up what has been brought to my attention. And we, as a city, are breaking some of the codes, and what are we doing about it? They specifically said, um, some of our alleyways and the train turntable. Is, the grass is up higher than it should be, and so I'm just bringing it, I'm just the messenger. Um, so I brought it up.
Okay. Y'all just gave me the best example we can have. Hal wants more done, and now that we're doing more, people want less.
Exactly.
And that's the, that's what you get into in a small town. And I'll carry you back, you may have been on the board, Hal. Everybody wanted speed bumps on Commerce Avenue. We thought everybody, and so we put speed bumps on Commerce Avenue. Next month, we found out not everybody wanted them. Maybe not even the majority of Commerce Avenue. And they wanted those speed bumps gone. We had such a row over at the city hall, that's where we were in that small room, that we made determination that night, we'd never put that speed bumps down again. There's a motion and pass. And so what I, my, I use that to say, what y'all are talking about, both sides have something valid, but you're never gonna make people happy with that. And you're not gonna make, so.
I heard, and I feel like the Congress-
Oh, I'm not fussing at you, but, yeah. And I think we are doing more enforcement now. We have to, have to look at that, but, ah.
No speed bumps?
No.
Ah, no speed, I'll never, no.
As, as we continue to grow, we need more enforcements and more uniformity. Otherwise, it's gonna get out of control.
Yep.
And unfortunately, it's, it's the, the pains of growing.
It is. And it's only gonna get worse, and it- It's more compi- And it's more complicated here because we're all built up on top of each other. We're built on small lots, we're built on small streets. Some people don't have enough room. Used to, when you, the family had one car, you had room for it. Now you got mama, papa, maybe two kids, and they all got cars, and they ain't rooms parking in the driveway. So they park out on the street. Yep, and, uh-
Sometimes maybe pull out my driveway, because there's a park in the street.
Yep, and it's, as Steve has hit the nail on the head, it's growth. Yeah, same at my place. Uh, and I can't put two of them together and get a good car out of it. Uh, the, uh, but those are the things, you know, both of what y'all are saying are valid points. Really, really. What Hal's talking about, people shouldn't be building without following codes and following the steps and giving us a chance to say whether or not it's legal or not. On the other hand, we, you know, you just can't have the wild, wild west. We gotta do some things, but. Y'all come up with an answer, let me know.
I say all of the rules. It's a black and white, we're on a very few gray, you can really look at it.
And put, and, and put down paw prints and a purple and a white stop line.
Stop sign, that's right.
We have a little fun here, but we're serious about this. But those are some of the things that, the challenges you face. You try to fix one problem, maybe you start two more.
Well, you all started the fix. The fix was making them accessible to the public so we can look at them and know what they are. When we got here, I printed out the codes, um, so I would, because I love reading that kind of thing for a minute. And they were dated twenty-eleven, we got here in twenty-fifteen. And they're just now being put available to online. That's that. Because if I want to buy a question and I want to know, like every other, well, I'm not like every other kid that can push a button and work remote, I have to be taught. But they're like automatic, and if it's not on there, they can just do what they want. So you're just taking step one, you're getting it on there so they can look. And then they say, say, "Well, where does it say that?", you can say it's right there.
I've gotten that a whole lot, when I'm like, well, it does say it can't be so high. I don't know what that limit is, I just know here it's so high.
They can't verify it, and they can't follow it up, and so it's a difficult, and, or some don't even know that. They don't know that's even a problem.
And like, well, maybe it looks good, but what do you think looks good? What I think looks good might be two different things, you know, so that's why I did those.
Well, that is a matter of what's gonna bring in ticks and vermin, and what's not. That's a personal assessment, that's, that's a, a safety, a health and safety issue. But you've already taken that step, so good.
Do I, I'm sorry?
Make it, make it available, and then go from there, and you're already taking that step. Make it available for them.
Well, I don't know how long it's gonna take to, for them to get them updated.
Yeah.
I didn't have that answer tonight. My gut hunch is it'll take a little while.
But there's some on there that are there now, people, show them, if you go out there and there's violation, take a copy and say, "Here's, here's the code, you're in violation."
If I'm not mistaken, that is what the first warning is, is the code given to them.
Yeah.
So they know the code, they know the violation.
You're in property, so you're in violation.
I think that warning, that's the-
Yeah.
They're determined, you know, they're caught, that's right.
And I appreciate, because we don't have access to the code, I do appreciate having that first, here's your, here's what the code says. Because I'm sure we've worked, I just learned it this week, that you can't say a foul language in public in the city limits, Water Town, it's a violation. John, one, one password, it's a violation. And I was like, huh.
You better go have a day.
There's a whole lot of things on there that you're gonna find, that you, hopefully you don't have one of those Andy Griffith moments where Gomer's making a citizen's arrest.
Right.
Uh-
Little things like that, that's what I'm like, I did not know that if I were to say something, how would I like, I should have given a ticket right away. That's something that's not a typical law work. So.
But, when you say codes, I want to make sure I understand, are you talking about overgrown vegetation and that type, well, let me, let me back up from-
Codes and ordinances.
I had three different, and I don't know if it's a code or an, I will tell you that.
It's the same thing.
Three different, okay. Three different-
The code is a compilation of all the city ordinances. And they run from water and sewer, to police powers, to not being able to shoot fireworks except at certain times, to when the city council meets, to order of business. When you say, so when people say codes, they don't really want all of them.
No.
They want to know how, how high they can let their grass grow.
How many cores they can have-
That type of thing.
But does it run?
So that's, that's a, a separate section. There's about, as I recall, eighteen or nineteen different sections in the municipal code. So when they say, "I want to see the codes", if they want to see it all, they want to see, but, but really what they're wanting is something specific. And when you give a warning ticket, it'll say on there, "You're in violation of WMC Water Town Municipal Code fourteen dash eleven". And then, we can get you that.
And if I'm not mistaken, he is really good, they're really good about having the exact verbiage.
It has to be on.
Not just the code number.
It has to be on.
It has the exact verbiage of what that number goes with, and I, I do appreciate it, that's how I-
But we're gonna set about to fix, fix these things. We're gonna set about to get that out there where people can look at. But I think that they're asking for more than what they really need.
Yes, I agree.
But, but-
And you know, you could, they could complain about not having this, well, I do this, and they, they're fine. Well, our code numbers has gone up, maybe because we can't get to every situation.
You can.
So we addressed one, and then next week we might address three. And so, yes, it's gonna go up, but that's just what it's gonna take to fix it. So I know that some of these calls or emails that I get, it's just in the works, and I'm not taking it all apart. But as the people that voted for me, I want to at least bring it up when I say-
Absolutely, absolutely, and we want to fix everything we can, except speed bumps.
How about speed ditches?
No. But we do want to, okay. So the bottom line is to get our codes re-cotified, so that we have a book that has every section of codes to compo, to comprise the municipal code. We'll have new books, and then we can put on the website. Everything, but that'll take a little time. But we'll start in the right direction. Okay. Good, and some good discussions tonight, I'm not sure we fixed everything, but-
And, and Mike, when we, when we go to get those online, we might want to focus on the first effort being the ordinances that affect the public from the day-to-day first.
I agree.
Because they don't necessarily care what the operation of the police department is, or how often the city council's supposed to meet, that's not the priority. We need to get the sections of the code that are priority, get those.
Sure.
We need to prioritize the sections to how we want them brought up.
Sure. We can do that, but I think we'll get them all at once, I really do. Uh, okay, what else? No.
Just thirty minutes later.
What about, what about who? No. What about Sean?
Um, just wanted to find out, when I walk down the street by the hardware store, across the Mexican restaurant, there is a really foul smell, sewage smell there ninety percent of the time.
Is that a health issue?
Is that what it is?
It's white, what you said.
It's white, what did you say it was?
Isn't that that health issue that you talked about?
No, no, I know the Mexican restaurant has a grease pad right there.
Yeah, hard to spot.
It makes me, it ain't that, um-
I'm not sure it's grease, I'm pretty sure it's sewage.
You take a look at that, Dave?
I'll, I'll try to.
Is that, uh, backflow prevented, would that be a problem?
They have a grease pad that they're on their, uh, asphalt, or the restaurant runs through it. Um, lets the grease, catches the grease, or doesn't go into the city sewer, it's stopping fires.
That's supposed to be pumped every so often, and-
Yeah, they pump it every so often.
Yeah. You, would you check on that, of course?
I'll, I'll look through it, if I can see anything.
Okay.
Yeah, because I was like, I don't know how folks are going in there to eat if you gotta get out of your car and it smells like that, you know?
That would be a downer.
And then on the speeding on our street, it's, uh, that sign itself, about a third of folks, you know, slowed down, and the other two-thirds think it's a high score type deal.
Oh, my goodness.
Um, and I tell you, it kind of surprised me, but at about three minutes to seven AM every morning, I got a school bus that goes down that street like Kelly Garber was racing.
Does she have a lawn mower?
No. But, I mean, it's one thing if you're, you know, late on Monday, but every morning, and you can hit the bus, it's like, crump, 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 you know, that's like, that's a school bus, so.
Steve needs to know that.
He can, he can track it. Like, I think they, even with the equipment they have on the bus, he can do it.
Well, I mean, he just needs, kind of like what we're talking about, Tom, he needs to know.
Yeah, three minutes till seven, going out almost, yeah.
Going out, away, okay.
Every morning, but he might-
You check with Steve on that? Okay.
And y'all kind of good at it.
Sign is helping some?
Yes.
But, okay.
I, I put the sign at the end of the road, and I asked permission, I know the city has the roadway into some of the ditch line.
Yeah.
So what happens is, uh, you know, he was gracious enough so you could put it in mine. But when you start putting it, it's yours, you can't see it, and it does cause problems, so I'll give you an example. So when I put it at the end down there, I had to go back up the street, and I had to ask two homeowners if I could trim the limbs, because, guess what, it's a wall, just feeding them the sign. So I knew that was next, well, you can't see the sign. So both of them were generous enough to be able to let me, you know, went and got some trimmers to trim the limbs out of that. But that road was so narrow, that there's really nowhere to put my sign, it's not my sign, it's city sign, but the sign.
Yeah.
To, you know, to give it more grace here, you know, and if you put it the other way, that helps none, because there's, you know, then there're like zero to sixty and ten feet. You know, the idea was to, just to put it there to get it, because the rest of it's so close to the road, and there's no margins.
There is not.
You know, because you have to have so much of a margin to put it, where if somebody runs off the road, they don't hit it.
Yep.
And that's why speeding on that road is so much more traction.
It does. Just a matter of jumping in ditch or something, being somebody's front door.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
You know, it's one of the things, it's not the same, but in a sense it is. We get, hadn't had any in a while, so I'm sure I'll get them now, that I brought it on us, but usually people complain about the fact we enforce the speed limits down through here on the highway. But if you'll look here tonight at all these little kids in the park, and if somebody comes down through at seventy or seventy-five miles an hour and loses control, and comes off that embankment like the Duke's a Hazard, they're gonna plow right into some of those kids. And so I don't make any apologies for us doing that, and I wouldn't make any apologies for any tickets written on side street like that, because you don't get a second chance if they lose control and go into somebody's front door.
And we're a community out walking, and some kids are playing, I-
Bicycles.
Thirty, to me, thirty-nine minutes is too much, but that's-
By the way, one of the, by the way, one of those things on the books and still there is that you can't ride your bicycle on the sidewalk. is that you can't ride your bicycle on the sidewalk. Mr. Estrada caught me several times, and he, and he told me, I'm gonna tell you daddy, and I had stopped for a while, and then, and then he caught me one day without a shirt on, he said, you can't ride without a shirt on, and came right on the sidewalk.
That, that actually breaks up.
And you thought he was being picky, but it was really bad.
I was scared, I was scared, still, still scared.
That actually reminds me of people parking on the side.
Yeah.
Parking.
They are.
To stay out of the street.
Yeah.
They are.
In Germany, that was, that was approved, we lived there for years, that was, that